Good evening. Welcome to the Goche City Council Meeting tonight, Tuesday, April the 18th, 2023, at 6:30 PM. We'll call the meeting to order, and the prayer will be by our Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankerson, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be by Councilman Gallott of Ward 3. Please stand and silence all electronic devices.
Good evening, gentlemen. I bow before the Father, and I give glory, honor, and praise, Lord. Thank you, Father, for our many blessings. We thank you for the wonderful things that are happening within our city right now, God, of the projects and things that are moving this city forward in a positive direction. We pray for your presence tonight, be with our city leaders, our councilors, as they make decisions and conduct city business in unity, Lord, and discernment. God, we just thank you for your hedge of protection that you place around our close responders, our city employees, and all our citizens, Lord. We thank you most of all for your Son, Jesus Christ, and his sacrifice for our sins on Calvary's cross, and we ask all of this in his name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Gallott, and thank you, Mr. Ankerson. That brings us to Agenda Order of Approval. Do we have any changes, Ms. Shantsey?
Yes, Mayor. You have a revised order for Consent Agenda Item Number Two and adding a letter from Goche Pride in front of you. I made the full Consent Agenda Item Number Three, but the members got cancelled. Consent Agenda Item Number Four, she agreed, Order Number 0002023.
Do we have a motion to approve the Agenda Order of Approval with the revisions by Ms. Shantsey?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our announcements by Ms. Shantsey.
The Goche Earth Day Celebration will be Friday, April 21st, from 9:00 AM until 4:30 PM at Shepherd State Park. The Goche Garden Club will host their plant sale on April 21st at 9:00 AM located at the Shepherd State Park lawn cabin. Tasty Thursday will be April 27th, starting at 11:00 AM at the former St. Andrew Mall property. And Jackson County and the City of Goche's community campout has been rescheduled to Saturday, June 3rd, starting at 3:00 PM at Shepherd State Park.
Thank you, Ms. Shantsey. That brings us to our presentation agenda. We have a proclamation declaring National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. If our dispatchers, telecommunications will come to the front, please to receive the proclamation. Tonight, we have with us Chastity McLendon, Jasmine Williams, and Jamie Elroy. They are our dispatchers, and they are the first person you speak to when you call 911 or the police department. The other ones are not able to make it. Some are on duty, and some had other obligations. But we wanted to make sure you all know we are very thankful for you all and all your work, and recognize y'all. Last week was y'all's special week designated to celebrate you all. So, State of Mississippi, City of Goche Proclamation. A proclamation declaring National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the City of Goche's Emergency Communications Center. And whereas, public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, public telecommunications, telecommunications of the City of Goche have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas, each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during their performance of their job in the past year. And now therefore, we, the mayor and city council for the City of Goche, Mississippi, declare April the 9th through April the 15th, 2023, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. And witness whereof, I appear to set my hand and cause the sale of the City of Goche, Mississippi, to be affixed on this, the 18th day of April, 2023, Mayor Casey Vaughn, City of Goche, Mississippi. So we thank you all. If y'all want, the ones that I think we should call out their name and recognize that are not here, but they do a phenomenal job, Tracy Webb, Tim Warner, Brittany Worth, Susan Powell, Kiana Henderson, Jennifer Broderick. So make sure you thank all of them when you go back. And this is yours, Chastity. This is yours, Jasmine. This is yours, Jane. And I'm gonna test what you give, just so y'all can keep up the PD, you can give this to our competitors. Thank you. I'm gonna try to get a photo with y'all, and the Deputy Chief Vaughn, and Captain Alman, and y'all come up with the city manager, and the council will scan. And y'all, okay. I should thank you for that. The next proclamation is a proclamation declaring Native Plant Month. It's the first time the governor has declared this this year. So if we could have Ms. Shantsey come to represent Shepherd State Park, because Chastity Bildo is not here, and also if we can have the project leader, Jeremy Edwardsen, from the Mississippi Sand Hill Crane Refuge, here to receive it on them. And we also have the Audubon. They are unable to attend, but we have emailed the proclamation to them. State of Mississippi, City of Goche Proclamation. A proclamation declaring Native Plant Month. Whereas, native plants are indigenous to our region and important part of Jackson County's natural heritage, history, and identity. And whereas, cultivating that native plants honors heritage, sustains the beauty and benefits of environmental resources, and preserves the natural link to wildland areas both past and present. And whereas, native plants are essential for healthy, diverse, and of substantial, sustainable ecosystems, and are critical for clean air, filtering water, and stabilizing soils. And whereas, Mississippi is home to more than 2,700 native plant species, including trees, shrubs, vines, and grasses. And whereas, native plants provide a high-quality food and shelter for native wildlife, including birds, butterflies, bees, and other pollinators, and both game and non-game species, as well as support resident and migratory birds in the Jackson County, Mississippi. And whereas, Shepherd State Park, Ms. Shantsey is here to represent them, Mississippi Sand Hill Crane Refuge, Jackson is here to receive the Mississippi Sand Hill Crane, and Jackson County Audubon, Castle River Audubon, and other Jackson County governmental entities, schools, and businesses are working collaboratively to expand the knowledge and importance of our native plants. And now therefore, we, the mayor and city council for the City of Goche, Mississippi, declare April 2023 and the years to come as Native Plant Month in the City of Goche, Mississippi. And witness whereof, I appear to set my hand and cause the sale of the City of Goche, Mississippi, to be affixed on the 18th day of April, 2023, Mayor Casey Vaughn, City of Goche, Mississippi. Thank you, Jasmine. Do y'all wanna say something, Ms. Shantsey, about the Shepherds?
Sure. If you haven't been to Shepherd State Park, it would be worth a while to go. It is a beautiful park. It has 400 acres of, there's trails out there, disc golf, a dog park, a beautiful marsh walk. It really is a special place, so I would encourage everybody to go visit.
Would you like to say something to everybody about the Refuge?
Sure. Really appreciate the opportunity and invite. So the native plants are important for not only wildlife, but for people, for all the reasons that you mentioned as well. Thanks for the community's support for the refuge as well, and so likewise, there's plenty of stuff to do in trails and visitor centers at the refuge as well, too. So we love seeing folks out there.
Thank you. And also, if you don't know, the Refuge also has a gift shop just like Shepherd State Park. So if you're looking for a last-minute gift for somebody, educational children, they have a gift that everybody could benefit from at both gift shops. So I encourage you to support that, because it goes right back into those establishments, right back to Shepherd, and right back to the Refuge over there. So thank y'all again. And if y'all, we can get a photo with you all for...
Hello.
And the Audubon, just so everybody knows, they worked with each government agency and made sure all the students, they got delivered a package of information to go where they can do native, learn about native plants this month. So it was a great partnership that they did, and made sure they included every city and the county in that program that they offered. That brings us to our presentation agenda, business agenda. I'm sorry, we have Business Agenda Item Number One, Authorization to Advertise for Bids for the Construction of Town Commons Park Face to Amphitheater Lawn.
Yes, Mayor. Yes, Mayor. Civil Engineering and the Landscape Architect has designed the lawn for the amphitheater. The amphitheater buildings were bid separately. I've asked them to come and show you the design and walk you through it prior to authorization to go out for bids tonight. So give me just a second, let me rearrange the chairs and cut the lights off. Would you like us to move in here?
Can everybody see back there? Oh, Mark, can y'all see?
Okay, let me try this. Oh, is that good? Is that good?
Don't stumble back there. There you go, that works out good right there.
I was wondering if I'd get crazy because the lights were dim. Keep your eye out.
Good evening. As Paula said, we're here to present, but we'd like authorization to advertise for this bid package, and encompasses, I'm gonna try to learn how to use this thing. It's pretty much everything inside the Great Lawn, including the food truck area, and also landscaping, which I'll touch on at the end, what we have. Y'all need to do a dry run on this thing.
We did like five of them.
It worked every time.
It worked every time, but this time it wasn't.
All right. We have 11 main features that we're gonna walk y'all through tonight. Everything from the main entrance, which is what I'll touch on at first. The main entrance is coming right off the north parking lot, but pretty much where we had the groundbreaking, where the stage was, that's where we're gonna funnel people through from the main parking lot. We gave you guys a cross-section of what it's gonna look like. It's gonna be really nice. But when you enter through this, you're gonna feel like you arrived somewhere, and that was kind of the whole thought process behind designing it. It's about 27 feet in height, and we have about, we have four 10-foot brick columns, but we're gonna funnel most of the traffic through there. Once you come through the main gate, you're gonna come through here, and you can peel off either to the left or to the right to go to your seating, or to filter out onto the Great Lawn to watch venues. The sidewalks vary from about 25 feet to 8 feet, so it's gonna be, be some nice walking paths to get people off the parking lot, through the main entrance, and to your seats.
So one of the main features you're gonna see when you come through is a retaining wall that we designed, the stage height. We wanted to, you know, the stage height's fairly high, so we wanted it great to that, the finished floor elevation, and bring up that back and give you that amphitheater bowl fill from the back to the front. One of the ideas we had in coming in, right now it's just gonna be a concrete retaining wall, but, you know, it would be nice to come in and have some signage that would say the sound, or possibly get a local artist to paint a mural, so you can come in and see some local art on that front wall, and give you a little taste of Goche coming in. Another feature with the Great Lawn is gonna be the food truck entrance. So down towards the northwest parking lot, you're gonna come into the great, you come in, and down here would be your food truck entrance. So we're gonna have power pedestals associated with that. You can have your tasty Thursdays in this little lawn area. You can set up some tents, have food trucks, and you have a nice gate to get everything in. Also, along them lines, to utilize the food truck entrance, cruising the coast, you would be able to come in, it's gonna be a reinforced turf, so you can pull the cars onto the lawn area, park them out there, no problem. So that would be your food truck entrance. And then ornamental fencing, so you're gonna have ornamental fencing around the perimeter of the Great Lawn. But gates on the southwest, so you're gonna have an entrance gate here, an entrance gate on the east, your main entrance gate, and also an entrance gate with food truck. If necessary, you could have ticket collectors on each entrance to allow people to come into the venue as well as exit. This is a detail on what your, the ornamental fencing, so these would be the gates. If you, if you remember back with the main entrance, they're matching the gates that you see here, so all fencing will tie in with each other. And then the main perimeter pencil, it'll be similar with a mesh lower portion. The grading of the lawns, so the first, the immediate to the stage, you're gonna have three terraces. The front area would be a brick paver VIP section. It comes up in elevation six inches for your second terrace, which is a reinforced turf. And between the second and the third terrace is gonna be a sidewalk, so if it's standing room only, you'll be able to come in and access your third, second terrace via that And this is a cross-section of that front area that I just spoke to, with your brick pavers immediate to the front of the stage, come up to your second terrace, a sidewalk, and then your third terrace. All of it, aside from the brick pavers, would be a reinforced, so six-inch sand material. So if you're standing on it and it's rained, it drains well, it's a reinforced Bermuda sod on top of it. You'd be able to set tables up on the third terrace and chairs, tables wouldn't sink into the grass. And this, this is what the brick pavers proposed would look like. It's a charcoal brick paper on a compacted limestone bed.
I'm gonna touch on the landscape. As you can tell from this rendering, it's pretty heavily landscaped around the perimeter. These, the larger trees along the edge of the berms, they're gonna be in the red oak, pin oak family. Picture of that right here. Along these berms, when you come through the main entrance and come down the sidewalk, we've got two sets of berms, and I'm pretty excited about this. They're like seven or eight feet high. It's gonna be a good place for kids to play, and also a good place if you just don't wanna be up in the crowd, to sit there and view, you know, different concerts, and kind of be a little bit away from things. And it's elevated enough that you can see, you can see from that distance. On the backside of these berms, we're gonna do some ornamental plants. One plant that we selected is this mulley grass. It's a purple seasonal grass. It looks real nice. I actually have it in my yard. I love it. Looks real good when it blooms. Give us a nice buffer from the buildings, that Front Dolphin, but right now, when you pull up to the site along the south side, you see those metal buildings. So we decided we wanted to give us a screen from that, so when you're viewing the concerts, you don't see it. So we're gonna put in some, we're gonna put in some flax myrtle, a good screening shrub, some magnolias, a small ornamental trees that have a little bit of color to it. Now, we're also gonna go ahead and tie in all the utilities to the amphitheater, the restrooms. We're gonna go ahead and stub out for potentially concession stands and two more additional restrooms. So we'll allow water, sewer, power for a full build-out. We're also gonna have some overflow parking off to the southwest. If you come in through the pickleball side on the west off of Dolphin, it's a pretty big area during larger concerts. We want to make sure that we have a place to put people, they can walk through a walking path that we have designed to bring you right through one of the ticketed gates. And also for security, along Dolphin, Ms. Paula, I wanna make sure we have something nice to button things up for the evenings. So we're gonna have two gates, one at each entrance, to make sure that we can shut it down by noon and have everything secure.
Mark, before you go to questions, maybe you covered this, and I didn't hear it. Could you go back to that picture of the amphitheater and explain half this area right here, the sloping? I didn't, I didn't know if you said anything about that.
No, that's a good point. That's kind of part of the feel when the first, so you feel like you've arrived. We wanted to make sure you have a true amphitheater feel. We worked real hard with our promoter, and we showed him all of our elevations, all of our cross-sections, to ensure that he has the venue that he wanted. Tyler's more familiar with the actual elevations, but it's a nice slope coming up from the stage.
Yeah, so you got about, I mean, you're gonna have about two to three-foot rise from the front of the stage to the back of that, and then another three-foot rise from the back curb, from your back curb to the back of this retaining wall. So all in all, it's about a two-and-a-half to three percent slope across the Great Lawn that'll give you a bowl effect, and everything tapers back down to, you know, close to grade on your bottom sidewalks, where this grade is gonna be on the front of the stage. So everything from here, as you can see the bowl, your elevations will go up, so anybody in the back will be able to see, you know, over the top, it has people in front of them.
Right, sorry.
Yeah, well, will that be reinforced turf as well?
Yes. So the entire lawn is reinforced turf. It's a six-inch sand re-layer zone with Bermuda sod on top of it.
Is there a drainage network up underneath there?
Yes, sir.
Fresh drains? Fresh drains. It's also gonna have an irrigation system, but we, we put a lot of effort into making sure the sand's gonna drain quickly. It's a six-inch sand base that we're putting underneath this along with French drains, and when it rains, the slinks should dry up, dry up quick for us. Y'all have any other questions?
Yes. Was that a real turf or a imitation turf?
It's a Bermuda sod.
Bermuda sod.
It's active. It's gonna be a Bermuda sod on top of six-inch fire reinforced sand. So it's gonna feel like a structure when you're walking on it, when the cars are driving on for cruising the coast. And like I said, it's gonna drain quickly.
Does it need a sprinkler system?
Yes, we're gonna have an irrigation system.
It's also easier to maintain than false turf.
Yeah, we put a lot, we had quite a few meetings about, should we go to real black, real grass, turf seating, or turf?
Yeah, artificial turf.
Artificial.
Yeah, artificial turf. Did a lot of research. Paul and I drove to several places. We looked at places in Florida, Alabama, and we landed on this, and that's what we feel the best about. You're gonna have that natural grass field, but it's gonna have some reinforcement to it.
Is this similar to the...
Councilman Albin, do you have any questions?
I don't.
Councilman Anderson, you have any more?
Um, no.
Councilman College?
I don't know if I wanna say it or not, ask it or not. What are we looking budgetary-wise on this?
Two and a half, maybe.
No, what? Was it? I thought it was 1.9. I mean, I'm confused.
With ours, with ours and hers combined, it's 2.5.
Oh, okay.
Two to 2.5.
What, what did you just say?
We had the Landscape Architect, we sent our budget separate from his, so he thought it was 1.9.
Yeah, that's right, and his was 500.
That's right, yeah. 200.
So 2.4. We just need reinstated, you know, potential bidders, hey, we need this like the birdie says, cheap, cheap.
Yes, yes. Oh, I do have another question. Those are permanent chair seating in that little arch, right in the front?
That's all actually removable.
Removable?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And everybody else can bring their, their chairs to put in the lawn?
Yes. I guess we're gonna have a stored spot for, for...
Probably back of house during non-concert.
Councilman, you go out?
I got a couple of questions. You've mentioned a mural on a retaining wall. Where's the retaining wall at?
Up front. As soon as you come through the gates, there will be...
How high is that?
It's about a five-foot retaining wall.
A five foot? How long is it?
About 200 foot, but it tapers down, you know, as your sign walks along.
And you don't want that whole thing a mural, or just a certain section of it?
You really just want something as soon as you walk in to have a mural or the signage of the sound, you know, so when you come through the gates, you see...
Second question is, if we're getting sponsors to do anything out there, for any particular thing, how, will they be able to have signage out there?
No, that's not part of the sponsorship package. You've got naming rights, and he's got different levels of sponsorship. So, for example, there's a premium seating, so you can buy, on the elevated level, you can buy chairs and tables and seating for so many people. There's premium seating. He's got it broken down, but it's not signage, unless it's, only the naming rights is the only signage. The rest of it is acknowledged on, like, your sound website and stuff like that.
Well, we could have that big old fence around the outside, and the way people wanna...
I don't know, I can talk to Nathan about it. That's just the packages that he's putting together.
I mean, if people wanna put up a, you know, a sign out there, we making money off of it. I don't see why not.
But I've never seen one that's like a ball field, where you had sponsors on the field fence.
Well, you know, even if you had...
I think he's talking like Brandon has those little placards inside the theater.
Yeah, they have placards, but that was on the seating areas, wasn't it?
Yeah.
But if you have a, and I'm gonna go back to, I was at Mississippi State this past Friday weekend, up there for a baseball game, and they had around the middle double levels, you know, you got two levels, they had a lighting section, an appetizer, different stuff on there. Of course, that, that would be too big, but if we could figure out a way that you had a lighting thing that run people's appetizing across it. Of course, we'd have to talk to Nathan about that, and I don't know if you'd do it across a top of the stage, or something like that.
No, they usually set screens up on the side of shows. It could possibly be something where they have a set of screen.
I think we gotta think about that. Kind of like y'all had a cruise on the coast, you have your sponsors up on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's, I think he constructed the amphitheater so he could mount LED screens in the event that was necessary. So it's really not related to this... So it's really not related to this package. It would be more something he could put on the screen if...
And I realize that, but that's, that's in the back of my mind. LED screens, it's appetizing sponsors for an event that's being happening out there with, for instance, uh, Goche Pride does something out there. Big LED signs sponsored by Goche Pride, you know, not Bud Light, though.
That was the only thing I had.
Is it? Okay, thank you, Councilman Gilat. Councilman Jackson?
Uh, yeah, so the turf, is it like the football turf? And what is the longevity of this turf?
It's gonna be an actual Bermuda grass, just reinforced underneath so it doesn't tear up real easily when you put the Cruisin' the Coast cars on it and so it drains quickly. So it, when you're walking on it, it's gonna be true bluegrass. It's just gonna have a little bit of support.
Okay, that's pretty much all I have.
Oh, was this rendition here, is that to scale? I just, I don't know why the seating area looks so small to me, but I guess I just need to picture it.
This is more of a pretty...
Okay. I would like to see the chairs that we have in mind for that.
We haven't gotten that far. It's not part of this package.
Okay, I just keep thinking like church banquet chairs, like those stick white ones. It's not gonna be something like that, right? I mean, it's gonna be like made for...
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Yeah, this is an exciting next step for us. Things are gonna, we've done all the dirty work, all the infrastructure, all the paving, and now, now we're gonna start doing the nice stuff.
I've got one more question.
Yes, sir.
We appetizing for a bid, what is gonna be the length of the contract?
210 days.
210 days.
And that should push us to February of next year.
February of next year, yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, because we have our first concert scheduled for...
Sorry?
April.
April, our first concert is scheduled for...
We try to give ourselves a little cushion.
Yeah, we're gonna have to be looking for chairs if we're gonna have them. You said the chairs is not in this phase. We're gonna have to be looking for chairs.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do that on a separate thing. And it really is gonna have to be a kind of a cooperative effort with Nathan because we need something that we can connect together in certain ways and make rows and then be removed and stored because you don't want the chairs out there all the time.
Right.
Because you wanna be able to have it in multi-purpose use. So, but that's something that we can, we can quote for our bid separately.
That's less than a year away. Less than a year away, though.
Is that all? No more questions from council? Thank you, Mark. Thank y'all for coming and doing the presentation, and we appreciate all y'all's hard work and working with Ms. Yancy and our staff and with Nathan. We appreciate all y'all's work.
It's been a big group effort. It's been enjoyable, but this is, but this is a fun one, so it'll be nice to see it come together.
And hopefully all the citizens are getting geared up and ready.
Yes, I love it.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Now that brings us... Do we have a motion to authorize an advertise for bids for the construction of the Town Commons Park Phase Two Amphitheater Great Lawn?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman Anderson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilat. Any discussion starting with Councilman Albin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George? All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number two. Authorization to acknowledge receipt of 10 bids and award the contract for the Jackson County Animal Shelter Water Main Extension Project to the lowest and best bidder, Gulf Coast Solutions, and the amount not to exceed $361,775.50 by Ms., our city manager, Ms. Paula Yancy.
Uh, yes, ma'am. We were very pleased with these bids, not only the amount, but it came in much lower than the engineer ended up being the high bidder on this one. So we were all very pleased with it. This is towards the project that you have the MOU with the county. You're responsible for the engineering and the directional bore under 90, and the rest of it, the county will reimburse. So it came, it came in good.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number two? Do we have a motion by council authorization to acknowledge receipt of the 10 bids and award the contract, Jackson County Animal Shelter Water Main Extension Project to the lowest and best bidder, Gulf Coast Solutions, and the amount not to exceed $361,775.50?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Gilat?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. Any discussion starting with Councilman Albin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
Yeah, I was just wondering, how in the world can you have a difference of a 999.4 million dollar bid and a 361,000 up bid on the same job? Anybody explain that?
I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot. It comes down to where some contractors might have materials stockpile that they're, they're planning on using on that job therefore they can, they can do it cheaper because they already have materials they may require years ago or, you know, they're just, contractors have their ways to do it things cheaper on some jobs than others. And, you know, a lot with the higher bids, some contractors, they may not, they might really want the job, so they throw a higher number at it.
If they do, they're happy.
Right. So, you know, with, with a project like this with 10 bids, I mean, it's super competitive. So, you know, you'll have your two or three contractors that really try to cut some corners and do it as cheap as possible. So that's really what I need to do.
All right, that's all I got. Thank you, sir. Thank you. I forgot to ask for, and I apologize to the citizens, if you had any citizen comments on, well, first of all, let's get our motion. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Wait, wait, we didn't have any other comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman College. I'm going back. I'm worried about one because I heard somebody want to make a comment. I apologize.
Well, just, I just wanna make sure that this company has been vetted and they have a good performance record.
Yeah. Prior to this, I've never heard of them. They gave me about two pages worth of references because I was concerned, and all of them checked out. They do a lot of federal work. They're DB, WB firm. Everybody I talked to just said they did a super job, so hopefully that'll stand true on this one.
Thank you, that's all right. Thank you, Councilman College, I'm apologizing. Councilman Gilat?
You mentioned something when you were presenting about reimbursement?
Yes, sorry, you have a MOU with the county because this is for the county animal shelter.
Right.
So that MOU said that you would pay for the engineering and the directional bore under Highway 90.
Right.
And the county is paying for the rest. So you submit, when you do a payout, you submit that to the county and that will reimburse you.
Now, is this 361,000 just for the portion going on the Highway 90?
No, that's the whole...
This is for the whole project.
If you remember, we went back and increased the MOU because we had to do a loop system.
Right.
And, and so we increased the MOU to like 400 and something about, 468, I think. And the product, the whole project came in at 361,000.
So what amount is the county gonna reimburse?
Same thing your MOU says.
They gonna reimburse?
And they will reimburse up to what's in that MOU, which you're gonna fall within the, but the MOU's literally saying...
361,000?
I think about 80,000 is ours for Jackson or the 80,000. If you remember, we made sure that we put valves there so...
You could strip that out of Highway 90, yes.
Ours was roughly 80,000. Everything else is on the counter.
Yes.
So the city's cost in this project?
Eight thousand, which was the right...
Only 80,000?
Uh-huh.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No comment.
We have a motion by Councilman Gilat, a second by Councilman College, all in favor? Motion carries. Now, that brings us back to business agenda item number one. Did any citizen have a comment? If you did, come to the podium and state your first and last name, and you have three minutes. And I apologize that y'all might have had a question y'all would like to know about the great lawn, so you should be able to ask.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brian Asbury. We've got three minutes. I have a serious safety and security issue when I saw the fences go up. Whenever I go someplace, there's gonna be a large group of people. Because of my military background, I'm always looking around for a way of escape. In case there's a shot fired, okay? Like last weekend, and, and you had, how many people gonna be sitting in there? How many people gonna be at the stadium?
Hopefully about 10 to 12,000.
Whoa, 10 to 12,000? Okay, once again, when I saw, I didn't see where the fences were or I saw where the gates, I don't know if it's gonna be fenced in all the way around, how people will get in and out, if they've done a, a computer survey to find out how many people can go through them gates? Will they be open during, during the performance to come in and out? Well, you know, all these security issues I would like to see addressed before the first person shows up. Because if the way things are going around the country, shots fired are starting to become the norm, even up in Hickory Hills. It's better take care. So once again, that's my issue. Address it as far as how many people can get out of that area if they panic in Jesus name.
Thank you, Mr. Asbury. You have a great evening. Any other comments? And I can assure you, they have a, working on a security plan. We're not having a function without a security plan. Okay, that brings us to business agenda item number three. Authorization to acknowledge receipt of 10 bids and award the contract for the Jackson County Civic Action slash Goche Head Start Drainage Improvement Project to the lowest and best bidder, Moran Holling LLC, and the amount not to exceed $226,908.95. Ms. Yancy?
Uh, yes, this is to award a bid on the playground, on the playground for the Head Start. This is actually being paid for by Jackson County. The bids came in at 426, 908, 95. I think Mark, who maybe can tell you a little bit about, but it will construct a concrete structure adjacent to the Head Start facility, install new drainage pipes and riprap, and extend the north end outfall approximately 30 linear feet to the north with a new head wall to alleviate the turbidity erosion issues. The south outfall would be a concrete catch basin and culvert that extend under Old Spanish Trail.
Thank you, Ms. Yancy. Do we have any citizen, um, public comments on business agenda item number three? No? Do we have a motion by council authorization to acknowledge receipt of the 10 bids and award the contract for the Jackson County Civic Action Goche Head Start Drainage Improvement Project to the lowest and best bidder, Moran Holling LLC, and the amount not to exceed
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George. Any discussion starting with Councilman Albin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
Yeah, just for clarification, this is the approximate location where this drainage improvement project, it is a city project that's gonna improve the drainage from Highway 90 to underneath Old Spanish Trail to the south. It just happens to fall between a church and the Civic Action Head Start that we partnered with the county on the, to do. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
Yeah, so I, I think he was saying exactly what I was thinking, what I was about to say, uh, yeah, but Councilman College. So this will go under Old Spanish Trail, it'll extend under Old Spanish Trail, where it go out into the woods, all that?
Bayou.
The bayou, that's what I meant. Okay, all right. That's all I wanted to make sure.
Councilman George?
No comment.
I just wanna thank our city manager and our Seymour Engineering and Councilman College and our board of supervisor, Mr. Ken Taylor and former mayor Ken Taylor, and our county administrator and their engineer. They've all worked hard on this project to get it to where it is. And if you've been out there when it rains, you know it's dangerous. It's dangerous on the playground for the children that adjoins that drainage ditch, which drains a lot of Highway 90s. So it is, we're blessed that the county is helping us with the project to get it completed for, it's a major safety issue. So thank all of them involved. And also Clearwater went out and helped do some stuff also, so thank Ramona and you all. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda number...
Cameron, second that one or...
Yeah. That brings us to business agenda item number four. Consider a request for a 300, 380-foot variance to square footage requirement for a guest house in an AG Agriculture Zoning District located at 6325 Brown Road, Goche, Mississippi, GPC number 23-11-VAR, PID number 82429320.075 by Mr. Scott Ankersen, our planning director.
Thank you, ma'am. The planning department has received this request from Christopher H. Stevens for a 380-foot variance for a guest house in Ag, Agricultural Zoning District. The application fee of 175 was paid on January 27, 2023, and all public motion requirements have been met. Some background on this project, the applicant would like to build an 1,130-square-foot guest house in the rear yard. The total square footage includes the living area and a front and back porch. The unified development units only allows 50% of the heated and cooled square footage of the principal residence or 750 square feet, whichever is less for the guest house. Therefore, the applicant was seeking a 380-foot square foot variance for size of the guest house. I've included in your packet the criteria for approval for a variance, and upon hearing this case, planning commission recommends that city council approve your request for the evidence presented in meeting the criteria for approval. City council may approve the variance request as presented, approve the variance request for changes, or deny the variance request. I've included the excerpt from the meeting, uh, dated April 6, 23, and the complete package with the application. And without asking any questions, we'll be happy to...
Thank you, Mr. Ankersen. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number four? Any public comments? No? Do we have a motion by council?
So moved.
Is it to accept the planning commission's recommendation?
To accept the planning commission's recommendation.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Gilat to accept the planning commission's recommendation to approve a 380-foot variance to square footage requirements for a guest house in an AG Agriculture Zoning District located at 6325 Brown Road, Goche, Mississippi, GPC number 23-11-VAR, PID 82429320.075. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anderson. Any discussion starting with Councilman Albin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
Just have, just have one. I understand it's a large property. I read through all the GPC, the Goche Plant Commission excerpts and all that stuff. As an AG, is there any, I understand the usage for the, for one to expand it? Is there any criteria that in the future, if they happen to sell to somebody else, that they could actually park this out in two different properties? Or would it have to, how would that work out as two primary structures?
So the unified development orders does require the guest house to be master metered from the main structure.
Okay. All right, that's the only question I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No comment.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Delott, a second by Councilman Anderson, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number five. Consider a request for a one hundred and sixty-nine variance, one hundred and sixty-nine-foot variance to the square footage requirements for a guest house in an A.G. agriculture zoning district located at five four one two Campbell Road, Goche, Mississippi, GPC number twenty-three dash twelve dash VAR, PID number eight-five-two-nine-eight-zero-six-nine dot zero-zero-zero. By Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankersen.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The planning department has received this request from Lisa Kootu for a one hundred and sixty-nine square foot variance for a guest house in an agricultural zoning district at fifty-four twelve Campbell Road. The application fee of a hundred and seventy-five dollars was paid on February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three, and all public notice requirements have been met. Background on this project, the applicant would like to build a nine hundred and nineteen-square-foot guest house in the rear yard. The total square footage includes the living area and the porch. And as said, stated before, the Unified Development Ordinance limits the guest house size to either fifty percent of the primary structure or seven hundred and fifty square feet, whichever is less. Therefore, given the facts of this property, the structure, she is asking for a one hundred and sixty-nine square foot variance. Uh, including, once again, the criteria for approval for the variance, as stated in Unified Development Ordinance in Section four, Plan Play, point four. Upon hearing this case, the Planning Commission recommends that City Council approve the request with the evidence presented, meeting the criteria of approval for a variance. City Council may approve the variance request, approve the variance for changes, or deny the variance request, as you know, including the complete excerpt from the meeting of GPC from April sixth, twenty-three, and the package with the application and the back half.
Thank you, Mr. Ankersen. Do we have any public comments? Do we have a motion by council?
Make a motion that we approve Planning Commission's recommendation and grant the variance.
Do we have a motion by Councilman College? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Delott? Any discussions, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comment.
Councilman Delott?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No comment.
All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number six. Consider a request for a two-foot variance to a side yard, excuse me, setback requirements, and a fourteen-foot variance to a front yard setback requirement for an accessory building in an R-one low-density, single-family residential zoning district located at one four zero eight West Lynn Street, Goche, Mississippi, GPC number twenty-three dash thirteen dash VAR, PID number eight-six-zero-three-seven-four-zero-seven dot zero-zero-zero. By Planning Director, Mr. Scott Ankersen.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning department has received this request from Carol Keating for a two-foot side yard variance and a fourteen-foot front yard variance for an accessory building in R-one low-density, single-family district. The application fee of a hundred and seventy-five dollars was paid on February seventh, twenty-twenty-three, and all public notice requirements have been met. Some background on this project, the applicant would like to build a detached garage that would be eight feet from the side property line, come fourteen feet in front of the front plane of the home. As you all know, accessory structures in R-one district, according to Unified Development Ordinance, should be behind the front plane of the house, and should be a ten-foot side setback. So, the facts of this property, I know the applicant is dealing with, it's flood zone toward the rear. Uh, also, there are some trees on the property they're trying to avoid removing. Um, this, this could be an addition if the home were currently below base flood elevation, so our flood ordinance will not allow them to add on to that home that's below base flood elevation without elevating the addition, which would not make sense for what they need as addition for the garage. So, those are just some facts of the property, some structures. I've included the criteria for approval again, and the Planning Commission recommends that City Council approve the request due to the unique characteristics of the existing structure and land conditions. City Council may approve the variance request as presented, approve the variance request for changes, or deny the variance request, you know, including the excerpt from the meeting and the application.
Thank you, Mr. Ankersen. Do we have any public comments? If you do, come to the podium, state your first and last name, and you have three minutes.
Mark Olson, twenty-five oh four, Robert Hiram Drive, fairly adjacent to the property in question. One of the real desirable things about the neighborhood is that everybody is set back, and there's no structures, uh, approaching on the roadway. A lot of people have auxiliary buildings, but they are set back as the code requires. This is kind of a wedge-shaped, unique property. But the problem is, with the topography of the neighborhood, this will open the door for probably a dozen or more variances. So, that's my big concern, is it will irreparably change the characteristics of a desirable neighborhood. I would ask that some consideration to the, the front yard setback be taken into consideration here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Any other citizen comments?
It's mine, it's mine, I don't know.
Ma'am, you'll have to, um, if you, if you wanna speak about it, you can come to the front, state your first and last name, and explain it. You're more than welcome.
Um, my name is Carol Keating, the property is my property. Um, I'm just, if I could expand my garage, that's all I'm trying to do. The house doesn't have a garage, there's thirty-five feet. And right now, I have a trailer parked in my driveway, and this building, if you look at my driveway, you see the trailer that's parked right there. This building will not expand out further. It'll actually be, like, if the building's there, you wouldn't see it, because the trailer would be in the way, unless I moved this trailer, which I was planning on doing. I, I don't, um, I understand the different things with the area and, and not making a new, you know, thing where everybody's building way out all the way to the road. Um, I, I don't feel this would do that. Um, and, like, like you said, I can't build behind, because there's literally a pool there, a huge live oak tree that's probably fifty feet up in the air, and I hate to tear that out. I think that would damage the area and, and all that that's right there. And this garage is going to look like, and maybe it's gonna match the house, it's gonna be brick. It's, um, it's not going to be a big storage container sitting out by the road. So, I don't think it would take away from the house. Um, I do believe that other people that are gonna make these same requests will have to do the same thing. They will have to come here, and so you're not all gonna be able to go, hey, well, we gave her one. They'll have to give reasons why. There's only one more property past my house, um, that's empty, and then it's the golf. And that guy, I do know, he is gonna build there, um, so I'm not sure, I mean, he doesn't have a problem. I know he's gonna build further over, but, I mean, there, there's, you know, it's not blocking anybody's view of the golf or anything else in that way. So, I'm, I'm, you know, I don't know, I'm just trying to stand up for, you know, what I'm trying to do. I just need a little more room to store my...
I have, I do have one question for you.
Oh.
I've got it pulled up here.
That's okay.
Okay. So, are both of these your properties right here?
They were originally, prior to me owning the house. So, the people that owned it before me, they had owned both parcels, okay? And, um, on that roundabout there, there was a storage shed, and it got blown down, I guess, during, you know, I don't know.
But do you own this right now, or is it separate?
No. So, when I bought the house, I owned the property just to the edge of the driveway, like, right, the driveway is literally...
Okay. Well, that's why some of it was highlighted, where it made it look like this was all one property, and it's not, that's a separate property right here.
Right, so if I could, if I could build it here, I would, but I don't know that...
I got you, okay.
He might not be too happy with it.
I just, I just wanted to get some clarification on this.
Right, right, so those properties were until I bought the property in, uh...
And then he subdivided it.
December of twenty-one, and he offered me the other lot, and I didn't want to go in over my head. And, um, I do know that's owned by somebody separate, they bought it in March or February of twenty-two. They're not gonna build there for a while, it's just an empty lot. So, I'm not sure if there's any, any other questions somebody might have for me and what I planned on doing. And I'm trying to make it so it looks right, and it matches the neighborhood, and I think it would look a lot better than having a big storage container to put my things in if I'm gonna use my garage or my car. And I don't wanna do that, you know, I don't wanna take away from the house either, so...
Thank you.
Alright.
Any other citizen comments? We have, do we have a motion from council?
Make a motion that we approve Planning Commission's recommendation and grant the variance.
We have a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Councilman George. Any discussions, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No, no discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
Yes, is the, uh, new garage, will it be attached in any way to the house, like with a breezeway, or?
I'm gonna concrete the walkway between the current garage and that garage, because, um, if you just leave it grass, it'll be like a four-foot space, and what's gonna collect there, mark and rain, so I'm gonna concrete that little walkway, but it will not be attached.
Okay.
Because the house is, it should have been a little bit better than...
And you say it is gonna be built with the house in mind, as far as same kinda brick?
It doesn't actually break.
Look the same and all?
Yeah, it's all floods on there.
And how far is that oak tree from the back, the new structure?
It's pretty close right there, you look at that tree.
Yeah, it's pretty close, so it won't... That's why I moved it fourteen foot forward, so the one end will be...
You know, there's a live oak? Reason I'm asking, a lot of people haven't cut live oaks down, that the live oak has grown over the last thirty or forty years to the hot size that the roots are undermining the slabs around it. And the reason I was asking, you're not building this too close to the oak tree?
Um, I don't think so, that's why I moved it that ten foot, or essentially fourteen foot, um, forward, and then where the live oak is.
Okay, that's all I got.
Councilman College?
Another question, Mr. Olson, have you seen the proposed plan on where it's gonna go as far as orientation on the property?
I looked at it in the packet, yes.
You looked in the packet, okay.
But in the packet, Mr. Olson, did you notice that that other lot was not hers? Cause in the package, it makes it look like she has a bunch of land where she could go backwards?
I knew that, I'd probably buy the property off.
Okay, okay.
He's aware, okay. And I, and I appreciate your concern on it, and I'm looking at the neighborhood here. Uh, unfortunately, I think, and this, this is a unique circumstance, specifically because there's no place else for her to be able to put this, this garage, if she wants to put it, she can't put it on the north side, because there's vegetation there, she can't go behind it, because it's in the flood zone. Uh, and you got a pool, then you got the oak tree, so we're kinda in a very unique situation here, and don't feel it's necessarily gonna set a precedence with regards to the matter of the neighborhood. And we will take that into consideration, one by one.
A lot of other people getting a variance for the same reason.
Yeah, so we're gonna take everything on a case by case, and we'll definitely keep you, while you're already aware of everything going on around here, so I'm sure if something else comes up like this, you'll be, be here to let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Delott?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No comment.
I just wanna, um, thank you for recognizing we have a tree ordinance, and it's very important that we save the trees and not go to where we cold-cut lots to build homes. That's just, don't look pleasing aesthetically as we recognize native plant month. You know, we do, you know, need to care about the environment, and that is basically what is hindering you from going backwards. So, it's take that down and go backwards, or protect the tree, so you're trying to protect the tree. Um, and we appreciate you looking at that, and we will, as Councilman College said, every case will be on a case-by-case base, and if they don't have a tree, then they can't be up close. I mean, or something hindering them from, or a flood zone issue. So, we appreciate, um, Mr. Olson, your concern, and we'll make sure to do our best that don't happen in your neighborhood. We have a motion by...
I got one more. Of course. Y'all have an estimate on what this is gonna cost you?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand. So, you're adding an improvement of thirty thousand dollars to your property, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We have, thank you, Councilman Delott. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number seven. Uh, the approval of the document of claims. Our cir- city clerk, Ms. Montgomery, our deputy clerk, Ms. Dickerson, they have provided them and the packages online, and we all got them in our package. So, they are readily available to anybody who wants to view them. Um, so we have no presentation that's already completed. Do we have any public comments? None? Do we have a motion from council?
Make a motion that we approve the document of claims, provide that all entries there on a tree correctly entered and not fraudulent.
We have a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anderson? Any discussions, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
I had a couple of questions, but they answered them, it's on you.
Thank you. Councilman Delott?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No, no comment.
Councilman George?
No comment.
We have a motion by Councilman College, second by Councilman Anderson, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our consent agenda, we approve them all in one motion unless somebody wants to pull one. We've already pulled, um, consent agenda item number three. Anybody wanna pull one?
I wanna get, pull number four, just by understanding.
Okay. So, we're pulling number four by Councilman Jackson. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda item number one? Approval of minutes from regular council meeting held April fourth, twenty-twenty-three. Consent agenda item number two, approval of income services request for an organizational celebration at Azteca's Restaurant. Three was pulled, four was pulled, five, approval of an agreement between the city of Goche and Cruisin' the Coast Inc. to host a one-day Cruisin' Through the Decades event. Six, authorization to advertise for bid for citywide lift station upgrade project. Seven, designation of Brenda Greco as the agent for the city of Goche's Hurricane Zeta Projects, and approval of the state and local disaster assistance agreement. Eight, designation of Brenda Greco as the agent for the city of Goche's Hurricane Ida Projects, and approval of the state local disaster assistance program. Nine, request to waive the pavilion rental fee at Baker Park for College Park Elementary students field trip. Ten, annual renewal of the contract with Singin' River Services as revised for the Life Care Plus program. Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda items one through two and five through ten?
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman Delott, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to consent agenda item number four, which is approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Department of Homeland Security and the Goche Fire Department in order to participate in the Mississippi State Task Forces. But Fire Chief Latch is not here, so we have Josh O'Heal, who is our training officer. I didn't wanna call you a wrong title, so you wanna explain it, um, officer here?
Uh, the memorandum of understanding is supposed to make sure that we're in the task force. Uh, they pay for a lot of training that we get from the state, uh, academy, they'll pay for some of our classes. Uh, they pay for some of our training at, um, Meridian to assist with, uh, search and, uh, missing lost persons. Any other questions?
Okay, you, you answered with the missing and lost persons, that's, that's what I was trying to get an understanding of. I was trying to figure out what it was, um, I, I, I didn't know if y'all was gonna be handling guns or what, I was like...
This is strictly, strictly, uh, disaster recovery.
Right.
We send out teams to do pre-commissions to... We send out teams to do pre-commissions to identify bad structures in the neighborhoods that are unsafe or fresh responders should respond to. Usually they, uh, we assist with, uh, other communities in our state that have been overwhelmed by natural disasters like the one that we just recently had up there.
Right.
Uh, the task force responded up there along with our other local agencies. And we send some of our people that we have attached to those as they get more training and education.
Okay.
Make a motion. Thank you.
Yeah, I make a motion. We authorize to through the memo, memorandum of understanding, a MOU with the Department of Homeland Security and Goche Fire Department in order to participate in the Mississippi State Task Force.
We have a motion by Councilman Jackson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilat. Any discussions start with Councilman Elbin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No.
Councilman Gilat?
No.
Councilman Jackson?
No, no comment.
Councilman George?
No comment.
All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hill. We appreciate you coming tonight and filling in for the chief and you did a phenomenal job. That brings us to our study agenda and study agenda number one is to discuss citizen comments. You come to the podium, you got three minutes. Take your first and last name and address. Any citizen comments? Three minutes. I think he can do what he needs to do in three minutes. He already has his answer.
Yeah, Brad Asbury, one two forty-five.
Two forty-five.
Okay, you start again. Brad Asbury, I live in Hickory Hills. I've lived in the same neighborhood, the same house since nineteen ninety-four, so I'm a permanent resident here.
What's the address, Mr. Ashbury?
Eighty-six oh five Pine Cone Drive in Hickory Hills. All right, I got three issues and all of them relate to safety, uh, and, and, and security up there in Hickory Hills. The first one, I wanna thank the team here, especially the city manager for paving, not paving, the striping up there in Hickory Hills. My wife is very happy. She can drive the road, but it's not complete. I would like the council and the city manager to put in the, uh, the edge of the stripes, okay, along the side of the road and not just the middle. And also the reflectors are all gone. Every one of the reflectors are missing. Same thing, uh, with the potholes. Uh, right now they're only filled with dirt. And she told me that there's a shortage of asphalt. The last time I was here and talked to her, uh, I would like to see all of those potholes where we've had serious accidents on Frontage Road and up there in Hickory Hills filled. Item number two, uh, each one of you were sent a copy of my email about my request to contact the Mississippi Department of Transportation to see if we can have an emergency road, uh, extended up there in Hickory Hills. I asked the city manager to make sure each one of you had a map showing where I was requesting this road to be built. Once again, she sent me the, the answer and to me, it's not acceptable because this has been going on for years. Ever since Councilman Dante Elbin has been here, he's brought up the same issue. Now, my request is that the city be able, or the city manager, contact the CB base and see if the commanding officer will take that area where I have laid out right here, uh, in that little short road and use that as a community activity for Goche. In other words, put in what they do best, uh, as those engineers with the, with the Navy and put in a temporary road uh, from, from where I have requested. You've got, you've got the map and everything, all the way to Frontage Road. We need an emergency road out of Hickory Hills. There's only one way in, one way out. And I'd also like to request again, the city, ask the Mississippi Department of Transportation to put a counter, to count how many vehicles have, have, are actually coming in and out in maybe one week or however y'all decide. But to let, let us know exactly what the volume of traffic is, uh, in coming in and out of that neighborhood. That would be trapped if something happens to that road. Finally, the, the security issue. Now, once again, I was hoping the chief of police would be here, but he's got his executive assistant. But ever since I've been here.
He's actually got, Mr. Ashbury, that's his deputy chief. That's not an executive assistant.
Okay, yes, sir. Anyway, he'll get the word. Anyway, uh, I'm very concerned about the increase in the issues, uh, the crime issues. There were shots fired last weekend up there in Hickory Hills. I don't know if y'all are aware of it. Uh, I'm, I'm on the Hickory Hills website. And every time there's an incident, somebody breaks into a vehicle, somebody knocks on somebody's door, somebody steals a package. We're getting it right on our computer the next day. And once again, yesterday, there were shots fired, uh, on this past Sunday up there. I don't know what the response was, but I heard again yesterday and this morning that they didn't hear any police cars responding or anything else. But anyway, I'm requesting that, uh, they open up the old fashioned pastor's house behind the Goche Baptist Church. There used to be an office there with, with at least one police officer. I do not know how often y'all patrol the streets up in that area or what, what the schedule actually is. But I would like to see a consideration of that office being rented or leased again from the church and opened up and you have a police officer right there. I would also like to see, uh, possibly, uh, an evaluation if we could get some golf carts and some volunteers, uh, to working out of that office, um, to, to put in the future. Okay, just to discuss if it's possible to have more security in that area. Things are really starting to deteriorate since I've last been here from what I'm hearing from other citizens in the neighborhood. And that's my primary concern. I would love to be able to meet with yourself or police chief and discuss some of my ideas to increase the security and the safety and all these issues up in Hickory Hills. Questions, comments, jokes?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Who's gonna be running these golf carts? Police officers you talking about?
Uh, volunteers that can be trained.
Oh.
But like, like they do in these rich, rich neighborhoods and other major cities, where they don't have enough police officers. And they put them on golf carts and they give them little talky, walkie, talky radios. And they tell them, if you have an issue, I want you to do who you're supposed to call. At least we'll have one representative in Hickory Hills. That is a huge area. And once again, you guys know what it's like up in there and how long it takes you guys to get up there if there is a military or shots fired. Okay, so I, and that needs to be changed.
This, this road you talking about building from Ocean Road, I don't even think that's on the map right now, but there is a concrete road there that did end. Who owns the land between there and Frontage Road, do you know?
This road, no, that, that.
Sand Hill Crane.
Sand Hill Crane owns the, the land that would go through there.
According, according to this property at the end.
Right, and there's people's personal property. We own some lots. Years ago, the city tried to acquire, prior councils ago, tried to acquire lots to get an access out. They were not able to get all the lots. So we own some lots, but there's not enough lots to make a road because there's other lots hindering, people not wanting to sell their parcels, et cetera.
On, on these two roads, I, I.
To get a way out of there. There is, there was.
There's a strip between.
There's a strip that was.
Right here.
Crane, Sand Hill Crane runs along Frontage Road between Lark and Frontage Road, all the way to Martin Bluff Road.
That's what I told you. He's got a map that shows the difference.
That's what I got from the city manager, showing that the, the edge of Sand Hill Crane.
It is, right. And it goes all the way.
And, and the area that's not part of that, that, that map.
But if you're trying to get it down to Frontage Road, you can, there is a strip of Sand Hill Crane that runs between backside of Lark property, between Frontage Road, all the way to Martin Bluff. That is Sand Hill Crane.
Okay.
That's what we've tried for years.
And they, they refuse to have an, an emergency road in there.
Every time we make some headway, every time.
Because there's another way to go through. That would be faster to go out through Sand Hill Crane, but we can't go through Sand Hill Crane. But that, that's the whole strip like Councilman College says of Sand Hill Crane.
And then it jumps Martin Bluff Road and continues east to Passageway River.
Yeah, all the way to the river. Now, there's a man here with Sand Hill Crane Refuge. He might be able to direct you to somebody up there that you could talk to.
Yeah.
And this, and this road you're talking about.
I'm serious, because we got a lot of people up there and, and the population's increasing. We're getting folks from all over the state and all y'all looked at the real estate, the houses are selling for three hundred fifty thousand dollars. So people are moving up there fast and all the lawyers being.
So that's what we work on.
You were talking about a temporary road.
Yes.
And, and it being gated off or closed off except in an emergency?
Except in an emergency, yes. Just a temporary road.
What kind of emergency?
Uh, hurricane.
Oh, hurricane.
You know what I mean? Earthquakes, Martin, you will.
Well, we just built the bridge up there for that purpose, but, uh.
Yeah, it doesn't get out of the.
What could possibly happen to the Martin Bluff Road between there and Frontage Road?
And, and I can't answer. All I know is if it's blocked, we're trapped. Literally, none of us can get out.
Only at one little area. If you, there's ways to go through roads, back roads in neighborhoods if you have to. If, only if that one area has an accident or a tree down. And it's a little, what, how many, a quarter of a mile strip? It's a very small strip. So that access that should, we should try to gain is a little area because you can go through neighborhoods and get around.
Well, what we might do is we may, we may tap Congressman Ezel and see if maybe he can make a little bit more headway as far as just a temporary.
Yes.
A, a temporary emergency route. But every time we get there, we get to a point to where there's potential because you can't purchase a property and it used to be thirty years ago, you could do a swap. If the city owned some property that was, that was in direct vicinity, was, was contiguous with the Sand Hill Crane, we could swap that property for a little easement, but they did away with all that. So, I mean, it's a lot of government red tape at the federal level that we've gone through in the past. And then they have a turnover. You start from square, square one again. Then regarding the, the substation that we had behind the church, we were leasing it. They were in a position where they wanted to sell that property and offered to us for sale, but it was way more expensive for what we utilized it for because initially when we occupied that spot, the vehicles were not outfitted with the computers and everything they have now. So very seldom, the officers now, they do all their paperwork and everything in their vehicles. The computers are set up there. So there's no reason for that substation up there anymore because it was never being utilized and we were, we were paying for rent for never using it. Plus they had some structural issues and we're having to do repairs and all that stuff. So that's why we did away and not purchased that property because the church wanted to sell it. So I don't know if they actually sold it or not. Uh, I haven't talked to the churches, to the pastors there to see if they sold it, but that was why we don't occupy that substation anymore.
But, but when you did, you did have a permanent police officer?
No, no.
The same as we have when Chief Elbin was here. We have the same officers for every beat.
But they were there. The, the Northbeat officers would work out of there periodically, do reports or whatever, you know. And it was designed to, for like the hurricanes, if somebody was trapped up in that area, we'd assign somebody and that's where they would stay for the duration of the hurricane. So they'd have dedicated officers in the north.
Which we have a fire station there and if we needed a police officer to stay in that area, he can stay or she can stay at the fire department.
Okay. And it was used for training, okay? Used for training and neighborhood watches as well. Very good.
Now, we do have neighborhood watch. We've been trying to implementing. So as far as residents in that area for taking any golf carts, because we actually do allow golf carts on Martin Bluff Road.
Yes.
We just, I mean, it's just getting the volunteerism for the neighborhood watch. We had a couple of meetings and tried to get the, uh, people to stand up for, or volunteer to be a neighborhood watch coordinator for the different areas. And, you know, a lot of people have a lot of enthusiasm when it comes to wanting to be the leader and all that stuff. It falls by the wayside. So, I mean, all these things that you're bringing up are very tangible, very reasonable points. It's just a matter of getting them to come fruition and getting the things involved with it. But I do appreciate, we all appreciate you coming up here and telling us your concerns for sure.
Okay, okay. Well, my last thing, once again, um, we plan in the future at least a town hall meeting at the church in that area to discuss some of these issues that are coming up. And to get some ideas from the rest of the folks up there besides Brad Asbury.
Yeah, because I live up there also. I live on Millard Drive and, 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 you know, Councilman Elbin lives up there. So, I mean, you have people on council that live up in the Hickory Hill area.
So you know what I'm going through, yes.
And, and, I mean, he's got relatives that live up there, so it's going. So, I mean, we're, we're, we're definitely not ignoring the area or any area in the city and so forth like that, so.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Ashbury, I want you to know that the number one thing you could do with your area, your neighbors and on those social media sites, we do not pay our city staff to monitor social media sites. They don't monitor the neighborhood. They don't monitor people's Facebook or anything like that.
I understand that.
So it's the citizen's responsibility, and I have encountered this many times here lately, where we have residents who have issues that you read on those neighborhood sites. They are not calling the PD. I or other elected officials are screenshotting them, sending them, and nobody ever called the PD. So the PD can't do nothing about anything if they're not getting the calls.
And they need that call immediately.
And they gotta call.
They go to three other people and it's thirty, forty minutes, hour, two hours late, sometimes a day late.
Or they don't need to call two days later when somebody tried to break in your house at two in the morning or whenever. You don't need to call two days later or forty-eight hours.
I agree with you one hundred percent. But, but once again, what we're saying right now, it's been so long since many of the citizens have gotten together for a town hall meeting to hear what you're just saying right now. Just beyond, yeah, so many new people have moved up there since the last town hall meeting. So it's kind of a refreshing thing to come up with some ideas and to remind the folk, this is the number you call. If it happens, you do this, 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 and this, and this, this is where we are, this is where, where we've been, where we are, and this is where we're finally going. That's what I'm recommending.
And here's what I would recommend you, if you see those posts.
Yes.
That we might not see. If I'm, I'm not on the neighborhood for that neighborhood, so I can't comment. It only lets you be in one, so I'm in mine. But if I see something, I always comment, have you called the PD?
Yes.
You know, the other day, we had a burglary in a prime area. I, I see it. I screenshot it. I call the PD to see if it's been reported. Not reported. I text the citizen, please call the PD and report it.
Yes.
You can't have a burglary and not call the police department.
Yes.
Or hear a gunshot and not call the police department.
Yes.
Ashbury.
Yes, sir.
You made it past three minute bail.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming, Mr. Ashbury. Any other citizen comments? Excuse me. No other? That brings us to council comments. It's the first, second meeting of the month, so we start with Councilman Elbin.
As always, I wanna thank the employees of the city of Goche for what you do. Couldn't do it without you. Clearwater, thanks for all your help on certain projects I've been dealing with. Lakefront Brother and I here, few more contractors, thank you. Thanks for all your suggestions. That's all.
Thank you, Councilman Elbin. Councilman Anderson?
I'll second what Councilman Elbin just said and I'm offended. I'm done.
Thank you. Um, Councilman College?
Uh, the only question I had, this was another comment that Ms. Ashbury had, was we did the center striping, but my understanding was, I thought when we awarded that contract for the thirty-three thousand, it was the center striping, new reflectors and edge striping. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Uh, they are fitting us in, so when they have a, they, they had a crew that got ringing out from, I don't know, Columbus, Mississippi. So they came and did the center striping. So they're, it should be complete within six weeks is what I've been told. They're just pulling crews as they have them available to come and do it. So the next, probably the next part will be the outside white lines and they'll find new reflectors last, but I, I can't say that.
I got you, but I thought that was all part of the contract, so you asked that, so. Now, now the biggest thing is before we do that edge striping, though, those areas where we have to chip it off of the asphalt so forth, we need to go ahead and get those areas patched so that way, you know, they're not skipping with the edge striping and so forth and there, so. All right, that's what I thought we were, because I was like, I know we got way more than just a center stripe for that amount of money. So you're gonna get new reflectors and we're gonna have edge striping. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Gilat?
Just a reminder, I know we didn't have it on our announcements, but Saturday is in Jackson County hazardous waste collection at the Singing River Mall. So if you people have any junk you wanna get rid of.
Hazardous junk.
Hazardous junk. Get there early because they line up like crazy. And it goes, it's Saturday at Singing River Mall from eight to twelve.
Would I like to say, when do we put our dumpsters in status? The end of this month?
The Monday after that.
The Monday after that, okay.
Yeah, we don't want them out before. They'll fill up overnight. They fill up overnight anyway.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
You don't have one? Well.
Well, you gave it all that time.
Councilman George? I'm sorry, Junior?
I have no comment.
Thank you. I just wanna thank the city staff, and, um, I ask that we pray for, um, the crime in the world today. As you know, we had, um, a shooting, um, during spring break, and our sister city, um, a few over, um, and I ask that you just be with their officers and be with everybody, because it shouldn't matter what event's going on, it shouldn't matter about spring break, we all should be go, do what we wanna do and feel safe. And, um, thank our public safety for their work, because in today's world, who would want to get out there and try to protect us with what's going on? So kudos to all y'all that wanna step up and serve in, um, public safety, police, fire, and also please, um, O C A Dian ambulance, um, they do a great job, so kudos to all y'all. Also, um, don't forget, Earth Day is Friday, um, please go down to Shepherd and visit the Lot Cabin and, um, the Garden Club, they have a great thing going on. And also, Goche Pride, I just wanna thank them again. If y'all noticed, the planters, um, have been replanted, um, that they adopted, and they look fresh and vibrant, and, um, they continue to work on beautification, um, which is an important thing in our city, so I wanna thank all of you, um, for that. I also ask that you pray for my family as I travel the end of the week. My aunt passed away, um, and I ask that y'all keep my cousin Brantley, that was his grandmother, um, who raised him, and he needs all the prayers he can get at this time, so please pray for him. With that being said, um, our city manager, Ms. Janssle, do you have any comments? Our deputy clerk, Ms. Dickerson, you got any?
Thank you so much for always accommodating the citizens when they call needing something and all you do at the last minute for them.
Our city attorney, Mr. Dennis, any comments? Um, does any department heads, which I like to share anything, um, with us that y'all might have? Ms. Morgan? No comments? Deputy Chief? Um, and Mr. Hill? You don't wanna talk about our firefighter who went to pay toll?
Uh, for the firefighter challenge?